Yeah. Okay, now would be the time if you have your names submitted for a board or committee position and you would like to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Are there any board or committee member nominees that would like to introduce themselves? Seeing none, we will recess the city council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Good morning, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call the CRA meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all CRA members and officials are present. The first item of business is citizens' comments on CRA agenda items, which would be approval of the minutes, the project status report, and the budget status update for the CRA. Would anybody like to speak on those matters? Anybody like to speak on those three items? Now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the approval of the minutes.
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have the project status report. Howard.
Howard Koenig, CRA director. The Marina activity for the month, still pretty well booked. And eighteen livable boards. And the pump-out vessel activity. See, the gallons pumped is up from previous month and from last year, and they don't have to go as far to about the what they're pumping out. Affordable housing project on the Andrews Building is moving very well along. Contractor's doing very well. And if you go by there, you can actually see the shape now of turning commercial units into residential. So it's on track. The Fresh Market is out to bid, and the bids are due later this month. So hopefully, we'll get some good local bidders this time, because there are no federal requirements attached to this. And we'll find out soon enough, and we can get construction started July-August timeframe. The playground, we had a meeting with the group that raised the money for the playground, and we all agreed to what we want to see on that playground, now the types of equipment. So this month, we should get the final developed concept plan, and we'll show it to you and get started on construction.
Was the drainage and grading dependent on the equipment? Is that why it's ongoing? Was it dependent on the design of the playground? Is that why we?
Well, we had a, that has something to do with it. And I think everybody's so busy, it takes longer for things to get done. But yes, it had something to do with it.
Okay.
But we also had a agree on the final layout of what we wanted and where we wanted it, and we've done that.
So was it still back in the engineer's hands, or do we? Yes, okay.
This project will get done before, remember we, how many years it took for us to get the wayfinding signs up?
You had to remind us.
The Gokris Park, if it wasn't for the rain, they, they're still out there. They're out there today. That's moving quite along now. You can actually see the parking, how it's diagonal parking, how it's shaped. And the seawall work is going very well. So we got our inspector out there every day. They're out there. And the library, we have a later agenda item today. You know, we were supposed to be off the site, but the rain has not enabled us to leave the site. So now we have to wait for the water to sort of seep into the ground so we can come. All the dirt is silted. It's ready to go, ready to be put in, the remaining part. But now we have to wait. We have to get rid of the water and compact it and get it done. Herald Court Center. Unfortunately, one of the original tenants is leaving at the end of month. Couldn't make it. Could not compete with the Internet. So they're leaving. The Foot Landing is leaving. We're going to release them from their lease. And the Dream Salon and Spa had some contractor issues. They've got a new contractor in there to finish the build-out. So that's a premier location the Foot Landing was in, so we'll get another tenant. We've had vandalism throughout the years. I say "years" with an "s," and we've tried to control it, but we've given up. So what we're going to do, not a lot of vandalism, it just, it occurs, and then it occurs again. The Lashley Park restrooms will be locked at 10:00 PM. That's after, pretty much after everybody's, all the kids have used the interactive fountain, and eventually, the families have gone. And they'll be reopened at 7:15 AM. And Herald Court Center, we checked with the tenants there, and that will be cleaned and locked at dusk, and reopen at 7:15 AM. And we'll accommodate, like the Alive at Five, which is once a month, we're going to accommodate that. We just need to let us know. We'll have that on our schedule. We'll keep that open a little later if we have to. And then we had a request on the Farmer's Market. Some of the vendors like to get there very, very early, before 7:15 even. So we'll have to see how we can work with that on Saturdays. But maybe this will cut down on some of the vandalism.
So what about events in Lashley Park? Will they be accommodated? I mean, I know the music's supposed to stop at 10, but obviously, not everybody vacates the park at 10 o'clock.
Well, it's going to be, that'll have to be part of their event application now.
Okay.
Yeah, music stops at 10.
All right.
It's unfortunate, but we've had, we've had issues.
That was also going to be my question, whether we can make accommodations when there are special activities going on, and also on Taylor Street when there's something going on, like we've had over the past few weeks. We've had a lot of events where the road is closed. Is there a possibility that we can work with them and make sure we have facilities? Because right now, if that's, if these restrooms are going to be closed, then people are going to look to the restaurants, and the restaurants aren't going to be happy if people just show up and use their bathroom. So that was brought to my attention.
We're going to, we'll try. We'll try. The problem is that we've been finding out that late at night, after all the restaurants close, after the bars, or some people have had one too many, and/or now it's the summertime, the kids are out, and we've gotten complaints from the cleaning crew and from some of the patrons in that area that you need to go back to the restrooms. And recently, in Lashley Park, this was just a few weeks ago, not, maybe not even a few weeks ago, the, somebody took out the, I don't know, the sink areas, or they damaged that. So we have to deal with this. I don't know.
That's a shame.
There's also quite a lot of litter being left in the stairwell in the parking garage. I was in there last week, and going up to the second floor, there was garbage all over that people had left. So, I mean, we do have a problem. There's no concern, I mean, no way to get around that, I guess, but it is a problem, and I do realize that.
Unless anybody's got any other solution. Before, we kept it open, and that, you know, didn't quite work.
Other questions for Howard?
No.
No?
At this time.
Okay, next, we'll go into the budget status update for the CRA.
Thank you. Thank you. Sharon Nippenberg, Control for the City. Nice to see you all. It's been a while. This morning, the first update for the budget process is going to be CRA. Kristin's going to help me out. No, I'm just going to go over this real briefly, because we've had our CRA for a long time, but we do have some new members. And you did hear it mentioned by the lobbyists this morning. I think CRAs serve an extremely important role for a local community, because you have identified what used to be a blighted area, and have turned it into a very significant contribution, both to the business community and to the residents for amenities. So to do that, we identified, back in the day when it was formed, the tax base at that time was 80.6 million. And what a CRA district is allowed to do is any growth in value above the base is allowed to be retained by the district to continue to improve the district and remove the blighted area. And so we have identified just that segment. It's known as TIF, Tax Increment Financing. So that revenue that comes in above the base from ad valorem revenue can be used to offset any debt service, or actually cash fund projects, if you choose to. Dave wanted me to remind you that it's the TIF, it's the ad valorem revenue from the county, as well as from the city. And you'll see that when we get to the pro forma. When we restructured the debt a couple of years ago after the economic decline, it was agreed upon by the city and the county that we would not create any new projects, that we would only use the TIF revenue to eliminate the current debt, and once that's done, the district will close. So that's an understanding between the two. Occasionally, we do see something of a need that both the city and the county recognize, and then we discuss it with them, and if we have funds available, not the TIF funds, but other funds, we do go into those projects. And you'll see that in just a moment. In the assumptions, it's always important to know that we have to make assumptions at this point in time, and we assumed that the TIF revenue would grow, or the value of the district would grow 4%, which interpolated into a 5.95% increase in revenue, that the millage rates for the city and county would not change. That's just an assumption we make. It's not an indication of what the two entities might do, and that the debt service would be as it is currently. So those are our major assumptions. And given that, you'll see that the money coming in from Charlotte County, projected in 2017 was 988. In 2018, it'll be 1,047. And then the city share, the 501 and the 531. That total TIF revenue, as it relates to the debt service, you can see our debt service is growing ever so slightly each year. We structured it in anticipation of continued growth in value, so that eventually, we can pay off the debt. At this point, the value is slightly higher than the debt, which is a good thing, so we are building a small reserve. At the end of this year, it'll be 367. At the end of 2018, we expect it to be approximately 567,000. At some point in the future, and we do have the pro forma all the way out until 2031, we will be able, if things continue, to retire the debt a year or two early and end the district. Any questions so far? Yes, ma'am?
When you cited the 80.5 million, was that in 1989 when the CRA was started?
It, and I, the year, I apologize, I do not recall. You did. But it was the year that the district was formed, and that was the assessed value at that time, yes. This is just to show you how volatile TIF revenue can be, and why we are extremely conservative. We are back on a slight upswing, but you know, it's a business cycle, and we don't expect that to continue. And this just shows the actual revenue itself, how it somewhat mirrors the valuation, but it is slightly affected by how the city and the county do their millage rates. And this is just showing you that after restructuring the debt, we have been able to better match revenues with the expenditures. The second aspect of the CRA was when the city built the parking structure. So Herald Court is identified separately here, not for the debt on the structure, because that was over on the TIF side, but this is for operating the structure. So we do have tenants, and we do have needs in the parking structure itself. So this section is just identified to recognize the revenue coming in from the tenants and the offsetting expenditures of running the structure. At this point in time, we have 15,378 square feet leased, and 1,591, which is going to be the vacancy for the Foot Landing. It is only a lease for the partial year. Major expenses are insurance. We expect them to go up 5%. That's an estimate. Operating expenditures, 3%. The two new things that we introduced last year was an ongoing concern of can we maintain the infrastructure? We knew we could handle operations. We've done a lot of things to modify cost. But infrastructure is of an ongoing concern. Public Works is still working on a five-year plan of what that infrastructure need will be. In the meantime, we've sort of just jumped in and said, we're going to set aside $45,000 a year of the CRA reserves. Now, that's the third component that we haven't gotten to yet, but that money will run out. So after that, can Herald Court operations, which is a segment we're looking at right now, can it continue to manage the infrastructure needs? We don't know the answer, but I can tell you at this point, in the pro forma, I've set aside 50,000 a year, beginning in 2025. So we have an overlap first year, giving us a little more generous budget of $95,000. Because if you'll remember last year, when we did those major repairs for leakage, we understand, when you've got a $16 million infrastructure sitting there, there are going to be significant needs for it at various stages of its life.
Sharon, are they leaving in a deficit situation, or are they going to be able to pay all of the rent that they've committed to?
They have promised to pay all of the rent they've committed to.
Okay.
It's very admirable.
Thank you.
So this is the pro forma for operations, the revenues of 214 this year and 263 next year. That's in anticipation of the Dream Salon opening up, and a full year's revenue from them, and at some point in the year, Footland, the vacated Foot Landing being filled. Expenditures are 167, moving to 179. And as you can see, for the first time, we're actually beginning to establish an R&amp;R reserve specifically for them. So this is comforting to know that, you know, we started the year with 58,000, which is not very comfortable, and by the end of 18, we'll have 188,000 in their R&amp;M. Now, part of that is escrow for the tenants, because they are putting into their own R&amp;R for a common area maintenance, but part of that is just from our portion of the rents, where we'll eventually start setting aside the 50,000 a year for infrastructure needs. The third component, then, is just the overall operations of the CRA district. CRA has committed to operating and maintaining the improvements that they have put in place, and that they will continue to handle any of the needs of those capital projects. The sources for that are the land leases that we have in place, a repayment of a loan to Trabu Woods, and a modest interest income. At this point, the things that we have identified for them for ongoing maintenance are the fountain, the Lashley Park and Marina facilities, and the Herald Court facility. We can sustain those levels of maintenance until 2025, and then the ongoing land leases will continue to fund the Lashley Park amenities, which would be the fountain. That's our major, significant expense in that park. The pro forma for that shows revenues coming in of 121, and expenditures, the large expenditure there, of course, was in '17, was the finishing up of the major leak issues with the Herald Court, but an ongoing basis is more similar to 2018 of 154,000. And you see the reserves dropping from 985 at the beginning of '17 down to 341, and then another slight drop in '18 to 300. And just as a reminder, we don't have to go through it all, but Kristin, on the next slide, we just show you the major projects that went through, starting in '16, carrying over to '17, and why our reserves dropped so significantly. And these were the commitments that CRA had made and wanted to follow through on. But obviously, once that reserve is gone, and if we can't maintain the parks and the structures with the reserves that we've shown, the 150,000 annually, we would have to look to another source.
So as far as the parking, obviously, that's not going to happen this year. It'll just roll over, but it's already taken out of that account?
The 205.
When you say this year, do you mean fiscal year or calendar year?
Fiscal.
Fiscal year, you're correct. Calendar year, we may be able to get it done. It's possible.
Have we gotten anything back yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's going to the DRC.
Oh.
Tomorrow. No, what's tomorrow?
Friday.
Friday. It's going to the DRC Development Review Committee Friday. And depending on what comments they have, it's possible we might be able to get that constructed before the event season starts, because we can't conflict with the event season.
Right.
Otherwise, we wait a whole 'nother year.
Are we in the ballpark with the budget?
Don't know.
Okay.
We hope so. We hope so. I mean, I don't know.
Do we have any idea how long that part will take when we do have to do the project?
Our city engineer estimates that we have a, it's possible we could get it done in two to three months if the contractor focuses. So we have a very short timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Real short timeframe.
Yes.
Because we know when the events are.
Sure.
That concludes the overview of the CRA budget. Are there any questions?
Questions? No? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens' comments on CRA. Would anybody like to speak on the Community Redevelopment Agency? Now would be the time. Please make your way to this podium. You have three minutes. Anybody for CRA? Seeing none, we'll go Commissioner comments. Nancy.
Just looking forward to the parking at Lashley Park getting done.
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Yes.
Nothing.
I just want to say thank you. I really appreciated listening to Jerry Paul. I thought, because what he was talking about affects us all.
Yes. Nothing more. Thank you.
Nothing more.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Y'all need a restroom break?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, very definitely.
Since I cheated. You wouldn't mind taking your seats? We are now back in session, and we are going into our public hearings, the first of which is a CDBG resolution.
Yes, there's no need for me to read this resolution by title only. It was tabled on May 17, and staff is going to withdraw this resolution at this time, and we'll come back at a future date with a revised resolution.
Okay.
Do you want any? That's about it.
I think we've been all told that the negotiations are still ongoing with Bud, and...
Yeah, I think it's good to explain to the people who know.
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. We are working with the CDBG group in Miami on preparing an amendment to the plan. In that amendment, we will be using the unused funds for other projects. There are two that we are looking at. One of them still remains on the table, is the one that is in the packet regarding the furniture for the facility, as well as possibly completing the sidewalk areas that are in need over there. So we are working with them and hoping to have another afternoon phone call with them this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that has been withdrawn. Next, we have V05-17, which is a continuation from 517.
Right, but the public hearing was closed on May 17, and it was continued today for the opportunity for you to deliberate on this matter. In the interim, the city staff and representatives of Colony Point got together, and although it's described as an agreement in the staff report, my recommendation is if the city council was so inclined, would be if they were to approve the variance, the items that are included in your packet, which, as I said, have been sort of termed in agreement, would be conditions of the variance that would run with the land and can be enforced as a violation of the variance if they're not, if they're not actually implemented. So again, if you were inclined to approve this variance, the recommendation would be approve it with the, with whatever conditions that staff had at the first hearing, plus the items that were now in front of you, as to what the city would do and what Colony Point would do.
Okay, so unless we feel a need to reopen a public hearing, we're just going to deliberate?
Correct.
Okay.
I would ask, just for the record, if there is a representative of the Colony Point Condominium Association, if they would just state for the record that they do accept the conditions that had been worked out and is on the screen at the moment.
So do they need to be sworn?
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we certainly do.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Dave Baker, representing Colony Point. It was sworn in a month ago, if that still counts. We do agree with the agreement that was put together by Colony Point and by the city officials, as written, all of it.
Thank you.
And we intend to follow up as well.
Thank you.
That's sufficient. Yes, thank you.
I thought we had agreed at the last meeting that the seawall replacement would be done in 2018.
Lisa Hannan, interim zoning official, for the record. When we met with Colony Point and canal maintenance, it was Colony Point's request to push it out further due to the cost of the assessments that they have already placed on their members. I can defer that comment to Mr. Baker as to why, but it was their request to extend that time period.
So if there is any problem, are they going to proceed with the rest of the renovations prior to 2021, then?
They're, they're going to proceed up to the island with all their renovations, which is not actually part of the variance area. What they're going to do is hand remove and replace broken pavers that are closer to the seawall, not disturbing any subbase. However, they do know if that wall were to fail between now and the four years, they are still responsible for replacing their driveway and the wall and the pillar at their own expense. They aren't going to be doing the construction on it until we do the construction on the seawall.
I mean, when I read this staff report, I had some reservations about approving something that's going to happen in four years from now. I lived in a condo for six years, so things change, you know, things happen, storms. I mean, there's just so many different scenarios that could play into this. I mean, there's just so many different scenarios that could play into this. If we approve it today, then four years from now, they're still bound to, if we approve it the way it is with these conditions, they're bound to all of this. And if anything changes, then they would have to come back for a new variance.
Or an amendment to the...
An amendment to, would that be the whole process all over again? Or...
It would just be with respect, excuse me, to the amendment.
So would that be another variance application fee? Or how does that work?
There's an amendment application, and there's still a public hearing process to that. It'd be like when you amend a special exception or amend a plan development.
But the issue before the council would be only with respect to the amendment, not with respect to the underlying variance approval.
So there would be a chance that they could tweak it at that time, but only if everything here stayed intact, and it was an amendment of some kind?
Everything would stay intact unless or until the city council voted to change it.
Okay.
Now, you can ask, they can ask at any time for an amendment, and if circumstances change and you think that the amendment is warranted, there would be a public hearing, and possibly if the change created a substantial modification of the overall intent of what the variance was, then at your option, you could ask that the whole thing be reopened. So...
This could be reopened?
If there was, if there was, if they came back and asked for a change that would have caused you to vote differently today, then you can require it to be reopened if we consider it to be a substantial change of the intent of the variance. But if there was a circumstance that required a tweaking, that could be handled by an amendment at that time, and it would be up to you to decide whether or not to grant the amendment to the variance.
I still have reservations.
I'm okay with that. I think, you know, it allows them to, if something did take place, then there's just a tweaking, and we could decide at that point in time if someone, I mean, I could envision boards change, and so somebody could come onto the board that had his whole different vision that swayed everybody to think totally differently. And if that was the case, then we'd say, whoa, 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 wait a minute. That's a total departure from what we had agreed to. That's going to require you to come up with a whole new variance, a whole new...
As it should.
And that would be fair.
Okay. As long as they're okay with it.
Yep. I'm good.
Okay.
So I would like to move to approve V-05-17 with the conditions that staff and Colony Point agreed to in the first documents, as well as the new document titled Final Deliberation Agreement.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve with the recommendations in the staff report from the first filing.
Yes.
And this second page of deliberation agreements.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much for your understanding and patience.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We do not have any quasi-judicial public hearings, but we have several ordinance and resolutions, which we will have citizens' comments on. So if you would like to speak on any one of these items, now would be the time. You will make your way to this podium, and you will have three minutes. The first is a resolution with the city council in Charlotte County for cost sharing in the Punta Gorda Library. Then we have a resolution for the annexation of Walmart and Murphy Oil. We have a bunch of second readings, the first of which is the providing for the rocks in the side yards, ZA-02-17. Then we have ZA-03-17, which is the flagpole height regulations. Then we have ZA-04-17, which is, that was some Scrivener's...
This was to allow for an administrative variance when there's a discrepancy in surveys having to do with a previous development approval.
Okay. And then we have ZA-05-17, which is the...
This had to do with the cleaning up of the...
The property cleanup?
Yeah.
The roof structures and all of that. Yep. So if you would like to speak on any one of those items, now would be the time. Make your way to this podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Steve Fabian. I'd like to talk very briefly on C2. I think it's time that this council, or this commission, tells the county commissioners that the Bank of Punta Gorda is closed. I mean, they keep asking for money, and we keep sending money up there, and I think it's time that we stop it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on these items? Now would be the time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into C2.
Yes. This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, declaring its intent to participate in a 50/50 cost sharing with Charlotte County for the construction costs related to the enhanced design of the Punta Gorda Library, also known as South County Library and Historical Archives, and providing an effective date.
This proposal is being brought to you as a recommendation from both the city manager's office and the county administrator's office. It's for a cost sharing to get the project moving forward again to its completion with the enhanced design. Current estimates, remember, they haven't bid anything, but according to the construction manager for the project, current estimates are that the additional cost, construction costs and design costs to complete the project with the enhanced design is about another 900,000. Of that amount, about 300,000 will be handled by Charlotte County directly. That's for design and construction costs relating to the base design. As far as the enhanced design, the proposal in front of you is that the city and the county share 50/50 the estimated cost to complete the construction related to the enhanced design. So that's an estimated $300,000 each. And if approved, it will then go in front of the county commission for their consideration, and then we can get started on completing the design, getting it bid out, and getting it constructed. So it has the full, this resolution recommendation has the full support of both the city staff and the county administrator's staff.
And we have the Friends of the Library here who would like to speak.
Good morning. Bill Albers, for the record. The Friends of the Library are encouraged and very proud that the city is taking a leadership role in discussing this cost sharing proposal that will hopefully make the library the dream of a new library a reality. Our current library is 10,000 square feet and was built in 1973. It was more than 10 years ago that the city commissioners then recognized the need to provide a new, larger and more functional library in Punta Gorda, more than 10 years ago. It's been a long road. The Friends of the Library have been very involved in the planning and the design of the new facility, and they have previously committed $150,000 to help and are prepared to pay that, to help pay the cost for the furnishings in the library proper and outfit the Friends bookstore. So with that, let me introduce Katie Maisy, the president of the Friends, and she's going to spend a minute or two describing how those funds were raised and something new as well.
Thank you. For the record, Katie Maisy. I'm here representing the many individuals, families and businesses who are members of the Friends of the Punta Gorda Library. We have been serving the community for over 40 years. Our mission is to serve the library, patrons and community with our time and financial resources. We raise money through Friends memberships, business patrons, family foundation and local grants, donations. We host an annual literary luncheon, and we also have a used bookstore in the library itself, the space provided to us by Charlotte County. Everything we sell in the bookstore has been donated, and all of us who work in the bookstore are volunteers. Over the years, we have paid for improvements in the library, purchased equipment and books and other media. We fund the children and adult programs, and just this past weekend, we helped with the resources for the summer reading kickoff. We are frugal with our money and have been setting aside funds for many years to help with our goal of having a new library. The Friends, representing the community, want to have a library that we can be proud of, both in its function and its appearance. The exterior design is important, and it should be complementary of the area in which it's located. We now understand that the projected cost of the enhanced version is $600,000, and we want to help. The Friends board has authorized me to offer $50,000 toward the cost of the enhanced design if the city and county agree to fund the balance. We appreciate your consideration, and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So it is my understanding that the 50,000 would come off the top, and then the city and county would 50/50 split the remaining portion?
That's correct.
At this point, I'm in favor.
I think we need to get this done for our community. I understand Mr. Fabian's comments and totally get it, but on the other hand, enough is enough. We've gone far enough with this, and I think we need to be good faith partners with our county commission. So I'd like to move that we approve.
I'd second that.
And accept the Friends' contribution.
Yes. Second that.
So we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now, we believe this will be on a county commission agenda in the hopefully near future, and you're all invited to attend that meeting. Great.
Yeah, I'd like to know when that, if staff can let us know when that ends up being on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Okay.
We'll work that out. You want to say something? Come to the microphone, please.
Good morning. I'm Travis Mortimer, Capital Projects Manager for County Administration. I'm here representing Mr. Ray Sandrock this morning. Just to clarify, the resolution that you just passed, I believe, is a bold leadership step, and I, my intent is to then take your resolution to our county commission next week. We're already within that agenda period, so what we're going to do is bringing it up under comments. So it won't be a regular agenda item, but it will be brought up under comments for consideration by our board, where they can then consider it and give me direction as to which way to move forward with the project.
So it won't be approved or denied next meeting. It'll just be discussed?
It'll be discussed, and direction will be given to where I can then proceed with the design. And the way that we've kind of structured, you know, this arrangement, it allows us time to bring all the, your pledge and all the other funding. It gives me a little time to bring all the money together, but in the meantime, I can get started on the design. So I appreciate your time in considering this, and like I said, a bold leadership step. I look forward to bringing it to the county for their discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any way you could talk to Ray? Because I know in the beginning of the meeting, they amend their agenda.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the particulars are. I'll talk to him.
Okay.
We can.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we'll be there, some of us, hopefully. All right. Thank you. Next, we have the resolution for Walmart and Murphy Oil. Hold the presses.
Thank you, Nancy.
This is a, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only, but I'm going to give a very brief explanation. In the title, you'll see that the addresses have a Punta Gorda designation, that is the post office designation that is not within the territorial limits yet of the City of Punta Gorda. All right. So this is a resolution of the city council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, approving the annexation agreement between City of Punta Gorda and Walmart Stores East LP and Murphy Oil USA Inc. for the properties generally described as 5001 Taylor Road and 263 59 Jones Loop Road in Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida. Authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
We're asking you to approve it with zero grammatical changes to it. Walmart and Murphy Oil signed it. It only took God knows how many years.
How many lawyers?
Well, I started talking, I started having conversation with them as soon as I was elected to office in 2013. I started talking to the store manager, who then referred me to a gentleman named Quick Mack in Bentonville, Arkansas. And then their team referred me to Alicia Lewis at Greenspoon Martyr in Fort Lauderdale. And with Dave's help, and we worked on numbers, and I was crunching numbers with her, and...
Okay. So that's 2013, so we've been working on this even before that. So we're recommending approval so we can get started with the land use, comp plan changes, zoning changes and annexation.
They've already signed it, so keep that in mind.
I'll move approval of the resolution to accept the annexation agreement between the City of Punta Gorda and Walmart and Murphy Oil.
Second that.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution as it's written and signed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Yay!
Yeah. Let me just, let me just say this, just so that there's no misunderstanding. This is an agreement whereby the city will consider the annexation. It does not bind the city to the annexation, and all of the various actions that would need to implement the annexation will be subject to the appropriate public hearings.
Okay.
Multiple.
Yes.
I do have one quick question for Howard. I was asked, do we have any idea what the tax implication to the city is going to be when they are annexed?
We do. I don't have it with me.
Okay. Can you find out and let me know, please?
I can give you just a ballpark. I think when I remember calculating things, it was over their portion of the tax bill was like 50, over 50 some thousand dollars was just the city. Their total obligation was like 250,000, I think it was, or something like that. So it's, it is substantial.
Good. Thank you.
And they're two properties, so...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Murphy Oil is, that little pocket is separately owned by Murphy Oil. And what happened was, when we started talking to them, I said, and I knew that it was separate. I told Alicia, we need to make sure we're working in concert with Murphy Oil, and she, oh yeah, that's what we do. When we do all, any of these around the country, they forgot. They got Walmart done, and then they had to go back. And then, and the problem we got into that cost so much time is there were, it's each of these companies, it's their real estate department that handled this, and there were changes in leadership in the real estate department. So it causes, caused delays at Walmart, it caused delays at Murphy Oil, and it was just, and then it's just delays.
Well, we're on the road now.
We are.
Yay.
Okay. Next, we have ZA-02-17. It's a second reading.
Yes. So this is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapters 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 8, Standards of General Applicability, Section 8.13, Soil Conservation Subsections A, C, D1, and G, and amending Article 12, Landscaping Standards, Section 12.4, Types of Landscaping, Subsection D8D and D8E, providing allowance for rocks in side yards, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Any comments, changes, additions, deletions, motions?
Move approval of ZA-02-17, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA-02-17. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA-03-17.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 11, Sign Standards, Section 11.3, Permitted Signs, amending subsection 11.3F, subsection F in its entirety, providing for flag... entirety, providing for flagpole height and clarifying residential use versus commercial use, and providing for maintenance, providing for conflict inseparability and providing an effective date.
And the new language has been added, under eight, number, is that a one or an I? I guess, yeah, it's a one, it's a Roman numeral. One eight, which now reads, "All flags or banners must be maintained without missing letters, fading or being tattered or torn." Period. The city of Punta Gorda recommends adherence to the United States Flag Code. Is everybody okay with that language?
Yes, thank you for adding that.
Motions?
I so move that we, was it ZA, what's, zero three?
Yep.
One seven?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ZA zero three dash one seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA zero four dash one seven.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, chapter twenty-six, land development regulations, amending article sixteen, application review and approval requirements, amending section sixteen ten, application for variance, subsections one, amending definition of existing buildings to provide for relief for property owners needing to clear title, providing for conflict inseparability and providing an effective date.
Any changes with ZA zero four dash one seven?
Move, move approval of ZA dash zero four one seven, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA zero four dash one seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA zero five dash one seven.
And just for clarification, it was, it was subsection L.
Oh, okay.
All right. ZA dash zero five dash one seven is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, chapter twenty-six, land development regulations, amending article eight, section eight point eleven, property maintenance, subsections A, B, C, and D, clarifying the intent of those subsections, amending section eight point eleven E three, correcting a Scrivener's error, amending Punta Gorda Code, chapter nine, public nuisances, amending section nine dash twelve, appearance and maintenance standards, subsections A one, A two, A two B, A two C, and A three, concerning standards for exterior building walls, amending section nine dash twelve by deleting subsection B relating to rear and sidewalls and renumbering accordingly, amending the new subsections nine dash twelve B two and B three for clarification purposes, deleting subsection nine dash twelve D one regarding display window areas, amending subsection nine dash twelve D two regarding display windows and incorporating said provisions in the new subsection nine dash twelve B as a new subsection nine dash twelve B four, deleting subsections nine dash twelve E relating to canopies and awnings and renumbering accordingly, amending new subsection nine dash twelve C, providing for maintenance of roofs and roof structures, amending new subsection nine dash twelve E relating to maintenance of auxiliary structures, amending new subsections nine dash twelve F one and nine dash twelve F seven relating to maintenance of vacant lots, amending new subsection nine dash twelve G relating to temporary coverings, providing for conflict inseparability and providing an effective date.
Any other tweaks to this one? We had lots of discussion prior to, no?
No.
Motions?
I so move that we approve ZA oh five one seven?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA zero five dash one seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have consent agenda, which we have three items. Approval of the minutes, the invoices of Allen Norton in blue, and the monthly litigation report. Would anybody like to pull any of those items? Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, those three top, those three items, now would be the time. Approval of the minutes, the invoice of Allen Norton in blue, and the monthly litigation report. Seeing none.
Move approval of consent agenda? Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we move into our regular agenda, and we are gonna take citizens' comments now on the extension of the term contract with Wells Fargo Bank, the fiscal year 2018 utilities operation and five-year capital improvement program budget status update, and the development proposal for city-owned property on West Henry Street. If you would like to speak on any one of those three items, now would be the time. Please come to this podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
Good af, good morning. Bradford Gamblin, and I do have some comments on their new business, a development proposal for city-owned property in West Henry. I think that this West Henry prob, situation is based on an erroneous hypothesis that open space must be filled with houses in Punta Gorda. That is a fallacious hypothesis. Virtually every city I've lived in, been near, or small or big, has taken great pride in having some, at least, open space. Over eighty homes were built in Punta Gorda this last year, and it probably will continue this year to add homes in a residential area additionally to it. Just, I don't understand the necessity of doing so. Selling point for a lot of people coming into Punta Gorda is the fact this is a beautiful city, beautiful Punta Gorda Isles. We have space there, open space, and the lead-in to the upper part of the Isles is green and open and nice. I believe that adds value to the community, our residential community, and I do not believe that another number of houses or development commercially of that area will add to the value of it. The value is the open space. You go from New York City with what?